A 2020 regular meeting of the Hawthorne City Council is called to order with all members present. Kathy Wagner from Outreach Children's Ministry will do the invocation tonight. We will be led in the pledge of allegiance by Councilmember Olivia Valentine. Please stand.
I'm going to read from Jeremiah, Chapter 29, verses 11 through 13. "For I know the plans I have for you," declares the Lord, "plans to prosper you and not to harm you, plans that give you hope and a future. You will call on me and pray to me, and I will listen to you. You will seek me and find me when you seek me with all of your heart." Heavenly fathers, we come to this meeting tonight, we just ask you that we look for the answers that you want us to have, the straight and narrow, so that we are making the correct ways to help the city to be the better place it can be. We thank you, Jesus.
Amen.
Please face the flag of our great country, put your right hand over your heart, ready, begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, welcome to today's meeting. Okay, so we're going to get started with the Chief of Police, who's making a presentation on the agenda.
Good evening, Mayor, Mayor Pro Tem, council members. Represent the Police Department tonight. Wanted to take a few minutes to talk about some of the community policing initiatives that we have in plan and our partnerships, and I'll introduce a few here in a minute. But for 2020, we're introducing our new community policing initiative. I wanted to do that publicly here for the first time in front of our council and in front of our community members. Before I do, I just want to go over quickly some of our stats from last year, our crime stats compared to 2018 and 2019. And I have very good news to report that violent crime is down almost 17% overall. Property crime is down over 30%, 35%, and the biggest one is our residential burglaries. The home break-ins are down 30% approximately since 2018. So, great numbers here, and I can't really thank enough of your support, but also the men and women of our Police Department. Many are here tonight that have been tirelessly working out there in our community. So, these are, these are great numbers to be proud of for our community. Last year, we've, our officers handled or received over 44,000 incidents or calls to go to. And over 94,000 incidents they've handled throughout a year. So, this is, they're very active out there, and it just, it really shows the proactive nature of our agency and also the challenges of handling, you know, really over 44,000 calls throughout the year and doing a great job. That's, I'm really proud of our, our agency doing that. We also have implemented our community patrol checks, and what this is, is a, for our officers, whenever they get out of their cars, we encourage our patrol officers to get out and meet the community, whether it's a school, a business, a neighbor, and whenever they get out, that we document that, that it's important to stat those things. And last year, our patrol officers conducted over 1,500 of these community checks, and these are officers actually out of their police cars, getting to know their neighbors and businesses. We have invested over 30, we did over 3,100 park checks. Now, these are officers going to all of our parks, and I'll talk about the parks in a minute. But I can, I'm very proud to say that we're probably one of the few, maybe if not the only one in the South Bay, that have invested this much time and effort into making sure our parks are safe for our community to use. And lastly, our security checks. These are checks at our schools, at night, our K-9 officers doing checks at businesses, and we did over 2,700 of those. So, we're very proud of these numbers and, and all the efforts they're making beyond just handling radio calls, but to make an effort into our community policing initiative. And the reason why I'm here today is to announce our next phase in our community policing initiative and our commitment to our community policing, and it's called the Hawthorne Safe Initiative. These are the five areas that the Police Department will be working closely with our neighbors, our businesses, our schools, and have a strategy to continuously work and improve all of these areas, our parks, our streets, meaning traffic, our schools, our businesses, and our neighborhoods. And this will be part of something that we will continue to work from this point forward officially, and, and hopefully I can report back to you some great movement in this area. Our parks. So, we have over 100 security cameras now in all of our, in most of our parks, along with city provided Wi-Fi. We use it continuously to make sure that our parks are safe, and if there is a crime that occurred, that we address it and solve crimes that way. We've also partnered with our Parks and Rec Department. Vaughn is here, I hope. There he is. Please recognize him. It's been a great partnership. If you look at Memorial Park, how it is today compared to even three, four, or five years ago, this is a great partnership where we're proud to say that, you know, kids play there frequently, and it's been a transformation. We firmly believe that our, our parks need to be protected and it has to be safe. Once the parks go, then the neighborhood goes, we believe. So, we are investing heavily in our parks to make sure that we provide the best security and a safe place for our young families and our residents to go to. And as I mentioned, we've done over 3,200 park checks. This is a huge part of our organization and what we do, and we will continue to do that throughout the year. Our streets, and I want to recognize, we have a lot of our Traffic Bureau members here. We have Lieutenant Colquet in the back and in our motors, and I wanted them to be here to be recognized that, you know, they are tirelessly out there working to make sure our community is safe as far as traffic is concerned, through enforcement, through education. And our, one of our, you know, strategic plans for our streets is to be able to, at certain moments during the week or whenever we can, to group together and really saturate and work on neighborhoods. Whether it's the, if there are problems there, or if, if a school's having any issue, and we will have a high visibility patrol and enforcement in that neighborhood. And we'll be able to report those findings back, especially through Nextdoor, and let our community members know how much effort we're putting into those areas. So, it's not only just enforcement, but we, they are getting out of, off their bikes and, and visiting the schools to make sure the, the parents and the teachers are educated on school safety, especially during the rush hours there in that area. So, we'll be concentrating a lot on that. Obviously, the things that we, it's near and dear to us is DUI enforcement. I mean, there's so many tragedies we hear every day about DUI accidents and fatalities, and we are firmly committed to making sure that we do everything we can to keep our streets safe from DUI drivers. And lastly, as I mentioned, is school education. That's a big part of it, to teach our young students on proper safety with, you know, helmets and bicycles and all the things that go along with proper safety in, in traveling in our neighborhoods. So, that's what we plan to do. We will periodically, you'll see a lot of traffic enforcement in certain parts of the neighborhood, and this is part of it, is a Safe Streets Initiative, and we will communicate this with our public as much as we can. This is a big one for us. We've really committed a lot of time and effort and partnerships with our schools. Tonight, I have Dwayne Eaton from Sentinel Valley representing the school district there, and then Dr. Helen Morgan from Hawthorne School District is here to support us. We've worked closely together ever since, really, I became chief last year, and this is a big part. So, we've assigned another school resource officer to the program, and then we will continue with all the things that I will partner here. So, our partnerships with Hawthorne School District, Sentinel Valley, along with Wiseburn, is a big part of our commitment to school safety. We've offered training to the, the teachers on run height fight, stop the bleed, and we'll continue to make sure we invest in training for our teachers and along with our students. Technology, we have access to Hawthorne High School's security cameras, our officers do, and with the, with our officers having department-issued cell phones, our plan sometime this year is that they will have access in real time on their phones on security cameras at the school, so that if there is something happening there, that we have real-time information as they, they make decisions quickly, and we'll have that information. And that's really based on our partnership, starting from Dwayne and everybody at Hawthorne High School. And then the last part is mentoring and education. We don't want our young men and women and our students to see our officers really for the first time on something bad. We want them to be, to know our school resource officers, to know them by their first names, and really make an effort in our mentoring and education, so that hopefully they can make a difference in their lives down the road. So, it's a huge investment on our part, and we will continue to make sure that our schools are not only safe, but a place where they can meet our officers and, and be able to interact and have a great relationship for the future. So, our businesses. This is something that we will work, starting from now, is to, through our, and I have Sergeant Nichols here, I have Lieutenant Robbie Williams, and then staff over here from Community Affairs. They'll be working to reach out to our businesses, all of them, small, big, large, gigantic, everything, and to be able to have a relationship so that they have a voice in the community. And I'm really focused on our small businesses also, that they have a voice, and if there are any issues that they, some, a lot of times we'll go there and we'll understand, something might be affecting their business, but it's not, they don't feel like, they don't want to bother the Police Department, right? They don't want to call, it's not a 911 call. But we want to make sure we have that relationship with our businesses, so that they have a voice and that we can address issues, so that they feel like we're committed to their safety and, and they can run a business in town. Along with, as I mentioned here, and this is, Councilmember Valentine has championed this for a long time, is our parking lot security, so that we'll have a voice in that. So, that's a strategy we want to do, and then we'll have quarterly meetings with the business owners, hopefully at the police station and wherever, and, and we'll make sure they have a voice. So, we're committed to our businesses having a safe and secure opportunity here in Hawthorne. And this is the neighborhoods. So, Neighborhood Watch, Citizens Academy, all the traditional things that Police Departments have done in the past, we want to make sure that we're committed to that, so our neighborhoods, whether it's through social media or HOA meetings, that they have a voice in their concerns, and we address those immediately or as quickly as possible as the Police Department. So, we want to make sure that we have a strong footprint in all of our neighborhoods, and we'll work through the HOAs from each, each part of our community, and if there's no HOA there, we'll work to build one, or we'll walk door-to-door if we have to. But we want to make sure that we have a footprint in all of our neighborhoods there. So, those are the five initiatives, but these are some of the things that we already do now, that I've, I want to, to recognize our men and women, and Scotty will start with, right? We've got our Scotty, therapy dog here, service dog, not therapy dog. Really saved a lot of lives, too. You'll never, you know, tremendous program, and LaMika Bell, who is, his handler, has done so many things that's even beyond what's on this board here. It's really the commitment of our people. I'm very proud of, of her and the dog and everything that goes with that, and it's certainly above and beyond what our normal job and duties are. Coffee with a Cop, as you know, Ride to Live, this is teaching our, our community members proper motorcycle riding techniques. That's been a huge hit. Lieutenant Colquet runs that, and it's, it's, the classes are full every session. Footsaw, Power Project, all the things that we have here goes to show you the commitment that we have as the Police Department to investing in our community, our young men and women, but also building the value for our departments, so that we do the best we can to providing not only law enforcement services, but public safety. So, there you have it. Those are, these are the five areas that we're going to commit to, parks, streets, schools, businesses, and neighborhoods. We'll hopefully report back to you as this goes on, but we look forward to working with each one of you on, on these aspects, along with the chamber here, right? We've got the businesses, and we want to make sure that we have a strong footprint in all these areas. Lastly, I want to just, once again, thank all of your, your support for the Police Department, and really, all the men and women back here, the officers and the support staff are doing a tremendous amount of work, often goes unrecognized, and I wanted them to be here so that they can hear this and see the community's support and the commitment that we have in the partnerships with the community. So, that concludes my presentation. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
So, Chief, I definitely want to congratulate you, the men and women of the Police Department. When I took my first ride-along about like 11, 12 years ago, I mean, it was just so crazy how many calls the officer that I was riding with was attending to throughout the different corners of the city. Not only was it the traditional Monita Gardens, North Hawthorne, it was also Holly Glen and Bodge Park. I mean, we were in every single neighborhood in the five hours that I was with, with them on the ride-along. So, we're extremely proud of our police force, and we have the best police force around. And evidence of that is that a lot of other cities around the South Bay look to us to help them out, mutual support. One of the biggest things that we do is have the helicopter, which services not only Hawthorne, but all the other nearby cities, Torrance, the South Bay cities, the beach cities, I think you might even go over to Culver City, well, possibly Inglewood, et cetera. And so, they, they look to us to be able to provide the helicopter support, because we have the professionalism and the know-how on how to do that type of policing. Also, people come up to us and ask us, "What are you doing with regards to the homeless? What is it you're doing, this, this, and that?" Well, we have a homeless task force that has a combination of police, we have people who are trained in medical services, people, resource officers from our city, and together they go out and help all the people that are out there, try to, you know, not only say, "Hey, get up, let's start moving along," but most importantly, trying to give them the resources. So, that's something that a lot of the local cities look up to, and I don't know of any city that really does have that around here. And last of all, what I'm extremely proud of is the decrease in the crimes, the 17% for the violent crime, all the way down to the residential burglaries, which are 30%. So, that's a testament to what you're doing, what your predecessor, Bob Fager, set in place, and you're continuing with all the men and women, and with our full support here on the City Council. So, we, I'd like to credit us in a certain manner, in which we are letting you do what you know how to do best, not interfering, and what you're policing, and trusting in your professionalism, and we're extremely proud. So, congratulations once more.
Thank you very much. Thank you for the kind words.
To the chair, thank you. Thank you so much, Chief Ishi. I'm very proud of what you do and all of the men and women that work in the Police Department. I'm particularly, I'm always gratified when you send us reports, because you keep us involved and informed about everything you're doing. And you do wonderful work with the DUI checkpoints and finding so many DUIs and unlicensed drivers, and I just wonder, my goodness gracious, if you weren't doing that, what would we, you know, what kinds of rates of accidents would we be having if you weren't doing what you do? So, thank you for that alone. Thank you for the businesses, because I'm particularly proud of keeping our businesses active, keeping them safe, because we want to keep them in Hawthorne. So, we want them to feel as though they have, they have a friend in the Police Department and in the city, so that they'll feel as though they can come to you for whatever issues they're having with safety. And also, thank you for, for, for being a community police force and really going into the communities and trying to relate to the people, so that people see you as not just police officers enforcing the law, but also as people, and that they can relate to you in that way, so that when they have a problem, they'll feel as though they can come to you. Thank you for all of that. We're very proud of you.
Thank you very much, Mayor.
Okay, so, one of the things, I did mention Citizens Academy, so hopefully that's something that we could bring back.
I have it on a list of things, yes.
It's an awesome thing. Councilmember Haddar Wood?
To the chair, thank you, Mayor. Yeah, I want to echo the same that my council colleagues that I mentioned regarding, thank you for all the community police work that you do. But I wanted to put a little more info, and I'm glad you touched on, on the business kind of security initiative that you guys are rolling out. When I first learned about it during the homeless count, even I was surprised by the level of involvement that you guys are willing to take on, especially with the limited amount of resources that you have at your disposal compared to all the other beach cities, unfortunately. For example, during the homeless count, we had the entire Metro Unit come out and help us with the count, realizing for the first time that our Metro Unit is two officers that has to deal with the, the whole homeless issue within Hawthorne, and after that, they still have to do their regular calls. So, witnessing it from that perspective blew my mind on how much work that goes into just even on the homeless side for Hawthorne PD. Shock with a Cop was amazing when I saw it with Target. I want to give a shout-out to Target for being such a great partner with PD, that was astounding. The biggest thing was the teen dialogue. I want to thank you for, you know, at least spending some time with your units and talking about sexual harassment and DV, and discussing this potentially at high school campuses, because you're right, the, the less intimidating we make these interactions with our police officers, especially with the teen population, you would have a lot of teen suicide prevention and harassment charges happen. If you just make it a safe environment where teens feel safe to come to PD with any kind of question. I love the initiative you guys are taking, that's amazing, and I also want to give a shout-out to Russell, learning how with your, working with PD and the judge orders has really helped clean and push the work that PD's doing. So, I wanted to shout-out to you, give you credit for that as well. But yeah, no, tremendous job to you, the Police Department and the Metro Unit, great job.
Appreciate it, thank you.
Mayor Pro Tem, want to? You want to say it to him? Okay, Councilmember, go ahead.
When I was in my twenties, I, I had a partner in real estate, was a sergeant in the Hawthorne Police Department, Floyd Hayes. So, I grew up in Hawthorne with Floyd, and I went out with him many, many times to see the work and the sting operations that they would do, and I had a, you know, I had a lot of admiration for the work that the guys do. And I think I mentioned it to you, the work that I do with some of the veterans, I had a vet that I brought over from out of state, I was trying to help him out, and I moved him into my house, and it turned into a nightmare. You know, the guy was drinking a lot, and it was just a really, really uncomfortable situation. And I finally, out of desperation, I called the Vet Center, and they said, "Listen, there's a, there's a task force that works Hawthorne and Gardena, and they deal with these kinds of situations. Do you want to talk to them?" And I said, "Yeah, I would love to talk to them," because I was, I was out of ideas, and, and there was, they came to my office, and the social worker wore a bulletproof vest. You know, that, that just gives you an idea. And what they did is they would go and diffuse, you know, bad situations, particularly with the mental problems that are out in the street. And they came over and they knocked on the guy, because the guy wouldn't come out of the bedroom, he knocked on the door, they got him out, they took him to Long Beach VA, and they, they saved my bacon, because I was out of ideas as to what to do. You know, sometimes you go a little too far, and, and sometimes in the work that I do, you have to know boundaries, and sometimes you learn those the hard way. But that was a very professional task force, and I know that they're still operating, but, you know, I always wanted to thank the police for, and actually being a part of a solution like that, it was good. I think you guys are doing a great job, you know?
Appreciate it, thank you very much. Thank you. The Metro Team you mentioned, you know, just in interest of time, we didn't mention too much here, but we have something in the future for them, that will definitely be recognized, along with the Public Works and everybody that is doing all the things that you mentioned. So, we'll do that in a future time, thank you.
Mayor Pro Tem?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Chief, again, congratulations, and your entire department, actually, the HPD, you know, we are very proud of what you have been doing out there, because, you know, it goes a long way, right? Especially when you bring community policing, but you guys have been doing that, you know, with Coffee with a Cop, with the school districts, because I remember since, you know, back in nineties, when we used to have all the Community Resource Office through grants that we, we wrote to, you know, the Department of Justice. So, you guys have been doing this work, and now you're just extending a little bit more further, you know, through, into the community. And to me, it's very valuable, because, like you said, you know, we need to teach these kids not to be afraid of police officers, because you guys are there to save our lives, not to put fear into, into us. So, so when you- So, so when you go out there and I see you guys all the time on the street, 24/7, because I live right over here, I'm on the street, you know, almost every day, even nighttime, you know, 2:00 in the morning, 2:00 in the morning. So you out there, you know, patrol our street, especially the parks. I have seen tremendous improvement on the parks, like you mentioned, you know, Memorial Park, but you know, Jim Thorpe Park, you know, that I have the preschool in there. So I have seen the improvements coming. So all these numbers, the statistics, you know, the crime is down, so it's not a brain because you guys are doing your job. You're out there protecting us and you put your lives on the line for every second of the day. So to me, you know, it is nothing more than a police department that is well-run with outstanding staff and you guys have proved that beyond my reasons of it. So, so my hat goes off to you, to your staff, to all the PDs up here. So you got my, I don't know, trillion of support, okay? So I'm, I'm here for anything you need or anything your department need, I'm here for you guys because you guys protecting us. You're protecting my home, you're protecting my schools, like Dr. Morgan and Santana Valor, we were there, you know, you guys doing, you know, the active shooting, all of those tremendous education that you're giving to us. So, so it's been a blessing and continue to do so. So I'm not surprised that you come up with more initiative to put more, more work into your plate. So congratulations again. Thank you.
Appreciate it. Thank you very much, sir. Thank you.
Thank you, guys. All right, so we have a, we have a couple items, but before we do that, we have a birthday today, City Clerk Paul Jimenez, Dr. Paul Jimenez. And I like to, before we go to oral communications, we'd like to sing them happy birthday, everybody together.
Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday, dear Paul. Happy birthday to you.
Thank you, everybody. Much appreciated.
We don't give a cake.
This was a nice surprise. I was trying to hide it from everybody.
And we have another birthday. Mayor Protim. Alex Montero, so let's wish him a happy birthday also.
Happy birthday to you.
That was passed already.
Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday to you, Alex. Happy birthday to you.
That was January 13th, so just for your information.
Anybody else, anybody else?
I'm just kidding.
All right, so that's it for that, so.
That's good, yeah.
So now we're going to put our city clerk to work. Can you please read the guidelines to, for oral communications, please?
Yes, I can. During oral communication, speakers shall have three minutes to state their business. The Brown Act prohibits the City Council from providing a detailed response or acted upon any items not contained on the agenda. The governing bodies as a body shall have the discretion at the close of oral communications to refer your remarks to the City Manager for study, investigation, report, and/or recommendation.
Martin Saville? Okay. Pat Donaldson? Hawthorne Chamber?
Good evening, Mayor, Mayor Protim, City Council. Patricia Donaldson, President CEO of the Hawthorne Chamber of Commerce. We are moving our offices. We, they don't, they don't want to renew our lease because SpaceX is moving into the offices.
Really?
Yes.
Oh, man.
So we're moving to 13335 Hawthorne Boulevard. And I took a 10-year lease on that, so.
I was going to say, you couldn't use your connections to the, to the management?
I tried. I tried. Didn't work.
All those years of relationship with them?
Yeah, I know. All that, all those years, he didn't help me, believe me. So we're moving to 13335 Hawthorne Boulevard. It's across the street from Pizza Show. And we're going to start painting and fixing the place up really, really nice. And then we're going to have an open house with food and music and all that, probably the first, oh, maybe the second week of March, somewhere right in there after the State of the City. And then the State of the City, February 27th. And tables are going and going and almost gone. So anyone that wants a table, they need to get with us right away or separate seats. And that's February 27th and registration's at 11:30 with the ones who have the, the.
At 11:30?
Yes, and it starts at 12:00 noon sharp. So there are people that want to take pictures that are big sponsors. And I know, Mayor, you will be there early, so you can take pictures with them.
So let's make sure that we look at the schedule and we have it nice and concise, too. So I'll go over that with you.
Oh, yeah, we'll get together.
We need to talk about that.
Yeah, you and I. Okay, all right, thank you.
Thank you. Great job. Thank you very much. Peter Yu? Mr. City Attorney, you did talk to him.
Lady and gentleman.
You did talk to him and tell him that we don't own any properties we could do this on, right? Okay, but go ahead, sir. You still can express yourself.
I've been here since last year, July. Push one thing, that's push the city to affordable housing. I wasn't, I wasn't able to get the city's attention thanks to the mayor. Finally, last week, he sent someone, city official talked to me specifically, but talk is chief, by the way, we're talking action. Specifically, we're talking about a one-city lot on 14115 Codera Avenue. City owns it. City's plan is to sell it to a friend developer, approve him to build 18-unit condo apartment for veteran. By the size and the market, I can guess, the unit will cost like $800,000. If you rent it, the property will have charged $3,000 a month. This is a guess. Well, by the way, the most veteran get less than $1,500 a month, so that's why we have veterans sleep on the street, okay? I have idea, I studied the case, I think I can put 168 units, not 18. Well, I said, talk is cheap, right? Okay. But if, even the rent is $900 a month, not $3,000. Some unit, oh, this is for two-bedroom, some unit is, will be $700. It's affordable, okay? What do you think about the, the people's rent is cut into one-third or a half? Think of how, how much improve their life, more than that. Place like this will be gone instantly when you come on market. So you can be selective. You select the people working in the area, okay? Since they're working the area, they don't need to drive anymore. The park, leave the car at the home, they walk to work, walk to everything, not location is perfect. It got everything in the, in a walking distance. That you limit the street parking, that you limit some traffic. Well, the more than that, the local shop will like it, the commercial will up. Well, what is good for the city? Well, if you sit a lot, okay, you earn, you earn a lot, you earn a land money, but you could, if you are a developer.
Excuse me, sir, you're out of time.
My estimate is you may earn three times, maybe like 10 million dollars. Of course, not that, hey, we have to prove it, we have to.
Sorry, Tidra, sir, but you reached your three-minute time limit.
Well, or you, you want me to keep talking or just?
Yeah, no, well, we have to move on to the next people's, but you can talk to me offline. I could talk to you offline.
Okay.
If you're here after the meeting, I'll continue talking to you, sir.
By the way, I, I need you to know, affordable house, America had lost a better day, we have lost a better day to provide affordable housing.
He's going to talk to you afterwards.
But thank you very much, Mr. Yu.
You don't want me to talk anymore?
No, it's, the city clerk has a time limit. Well, we have a defined time limit. But we have your letter. We do, we do receive all your letters and we do read everything you send to us. But our, our city attorney did talk to you. We don't own, own any properties that we can do these types of, I'm pretty sure any developer you talk to would love to put 500 units on it, but that's the problem here in our city. But we're going to keep to the commitment on that property for our homeless vets, so we have to stick to that. But thank you for your ideas, though. Anybody else wishing to express themselves to the City Council? Please form a line. If not, I'll declare oral communications close ordered. Mr. Clerk, can we, can you read the consent calendar, please?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I have four items on my consent calendar for your approval. Item six, approval of City Council minutes for the regular meeting of September 10th, 2019. Item seven, approval of waiver of full readings of resolutions and ordinances on tonight's agenda. Item eight, City Treasurer's request approval of the warrants. Item 10, Resolution Number 8148, Resolution of the City Council of the City of Hawthorne calling a special municipal election for November 3rd, 2020, requesting that such election be consolidated with the statewide general election held on that date and submitting a cannabis business tax measure to the electorate at that election for adoption.
Through the chair?
Yes, sir. Can I pull item number 10 for discussion?
I would like to also.
Yeah. Yes.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded, all items except 10 for right now. Please vote everyone.
The vote reflects Mayor and City Council voting yes.
Please go, go ahead, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just wanted to touch on this topic and kind of clear the confusion for those watching at home. I knew when, once I saw on the agenda, you know, I could see there could be some kind of concern seeing which way the council's going. So for this measure, just to have everyone be reassured at home, it's, the city is not taking a stance of approving or the distribution of cannabis. This is not doing that at all. This is also not saying that we are allocating amount of resources, how many centers are being opened, none of that at all. It's only to help combat the illegal market that's currently here, putting in some kind of tax measure to help combat what's already being there delivered into the City of Hawthorne. We sat down with PD and the City Manager and the Oversight Committee and we saw that even though we've, there is law that is making it illegal to deliver inside Hawthorne, they're still delivering left and right. And it's very hard to regulate when you have all these tech companies still delivering in the City of Hawthorne and expecting PD to address the illegal market and even the legitimate market that's still delivering into Hawthorne without the adequate resources. It's going to become a bigger issue and we're seeing that as they're still distributing, at least this way with the sales tax placed in, it would allow us to find out which ones are illegal and having us address those, helping provide a easier way to mitigate whatever kind of issue this industry is bringing to Hawthorne, helping PD address the underground market of it all as well. But just want to stress to the residents again, this is not us approving the sale or distribution at all. It's just allowing us to help combat the illegal market, getting revenue from the illegal services that are here and pushing back. That's about it.
Yes, I just wanted.
Councilmember Valentine.
Thank you. Just wanted to make my position clear on item 10. It's a resolution calling for a special election that will be submitted to the voters relating to attacks on cannabis businesses. It should be noted that this is not a bill to encourage the use of marijuana or other cannabis products or to permit the sale of such products in the City of Hawthorne. In case there's anyone thinking that this is a slippery slope and that we're going to approve such businesses, this is not that bill at all. I do not support the use of marijuana and I am not asking for anyone's support to use recreational marijuana. However, since the voters in the State of California have voted to allow the use of recreational marijuana, we feel the need to enact safeguards in our city by enacting a tax on businesses that engage in the retail sale of cannabis products. In the event that this City Council or a future City Council amends the zoning ordinance to permit cannabis sales, we will have the ability to tax such businesses in order to safeguard the city. The taxes will go into the general fund, which in turn may defray the cost of increased police services as are necessary and required. My statement is merely to explain why I am voting for this ballot measure. If cannabis is permitted in the future, I want to make sure that those retail businesses are not a net financial drain on the city. Thank you.
That was my understanding is that we're not going to be taxing whoever delivers or are we going to be taxing whoever delivers today? This was my understand. Right, right, right. That, that we have the ability to tax it.
Yes.
In the event that sometime down the road, we decide that, you know, we're going to allow one or whatever, that we're able to tax. And that, that 5%, is that limited to that or can you?
Well, the study that was given to us and that was made by RSG, they put that number as a good starting point. And again, it's just to, it would all go to help mitigate any extra police work that would arise if this were to be approved in the City of Hawthorne. It takes a lot to regulate. So at least this way, we're safeguarding the future of the city by implementing this measure. And again, as Valentine mentioned, it's not us approving anything.
Right, well, that's how I understood it.
If it's going forward, there's at least a measure to.
And if we're going to let you do it, you're going to be taxed.
Right, right.
Whether you like it or not.
Whether you like it or not.
One thing to just keep in mind, even this is a resolution for us to put something on the ballot on November 3rd, 2020, for the citizens of Hawthorne to vote yes or no. Okay, so, so us here, we're not passing nothing. Basically, this is to give the city clerk and the city attorney.
Put it on the ballot.
To put it, to send it to the county, to put on the ballot on November 3rd for the people of Hawthorne to decide if they want some type of retail cannabis in the City of Hawthorne. Because we have got a lot of people sending us letter requesting to open business in Hawthorne. And if you look around us, we have non-incorporated areas of Hawthorne, right? The Del Air, the Wiseburn, that people are starting to open this business. They opened one right there on Inglewood, across the street from Hawthorne, like, you know, two feet across, is, is non-incorporated area. So Hawthorne cannot enforce the laws there, but it's impact our community, right? Because it's right there on Inglewood across 132nd Street. So these businesses are coming and then we do not have the way to regulate them. We don't have the way to take some revenue from them so, so, so we can have money for our court enforcement of our Police Department to enforce the laws of cannabis. And the other thing that to keep in mind, that the State of California is going to have millions of dollars that are going to give to the cities that will help the Police Department, but those money only going to go to those cities that allows business of cannabis in your city. So, but this thing here is because we have had a lot of petition, a lot of letters coming to us asking to open cannabis in the City of Hawthorne. So we want, we don't want to make a decision here. We want the people of, the citizens of Hawthorne to tell us what to do. Because the citizens of Hawthorne vote 58% legalized marijuana when, when that proposition pass in California, 58% of the residents of Hawthorne vote for it. So that is where we're putting out there for you guys to decide because we know we will not have the votes here to pass anything, so it will be an impasse. But you are the, you're the one who makes that decision. So if you tell us yes or no, we will go with your will. So this is not for, we're not doing nothing here, basically. Basically, we're sending this resolution to the county to put on the ballot so you can vote yes or no on cannabis tax or possibility business in the City of Hawthorne.
Through the chair.
Can I ask, City Attorney? Mr. City Attorney, can you please summarize who this tax would apply to? Would it be, apply to sedentary locations or would it apply to people delivering and selling into the city? Kind of would try to do like an Amazon thing where they try to tax everybody that's selling into California, that type of deal? Can you please summarize that?
Yeah, my, my opinion is that the delivery businesses are already subject to our business license tax because the state already permits a sales, I'm not sales, but just the deliveries to our city, even though we don't permit retail establishments in our city. But once this tax measure passes in November. But once this tax measure passes in November, we can start taxing those retail businesses if in the future the city council amends the zoning ordinance to allow them in the first place.
Through the chair.
Well, I, I just wanted to say that I think, I don't want to make anyone think that this is a slippery slope toward approving marijuana because I, marijuana retail sales in the city, because that's something I would not vote for. And I, and I don't believe that the voters, when they actually passed, actually had a clear understanding of what they were voting for. The illegal sales are not going to decrease. If, if you, if you enact a measure to make marijuana legal in the city, that's not going to reduce the illegal sales. Los Angeles enacted, enacted a law to approve retail marijuana in the city and the illegal businesses still proliferated. So we're still going to have a problem with illegal sales regardless of whatever happens as far as approving legal sales. So I don't think, I, it's, it's not going to have anything to do, it's not going to decrease illegal sales if we approve legal sales of marijuana. So that would not be a reason to, to approve it.
Well, the letters that I've gotten are from companies that want to open up shops here in the city of Hawthorne. I have not received one letter as from residents asking us to, hey, why don't you open up shops?
Right, it's all, it's a business.
I just wanted to, I just wanted to-
Of course it's business.
No, but I just wanted to clarify. A petition, petition sounds like it's residents signing a petition.
I think about petition.
You did.
No.
That they're petition, you did.
Through, through the chair.
So, no, wait, hold on, I'm not finished, I'm not finished. So, I just want to clarify that a lot of those people that are coming to the city are like those businesses that want to open up shops. So I, I'm still kind of hesitant on this, so go ahead.
For me, it was just a quick remark. I just wanted to not muddy the waters for those viewing at home. As you mentioned, it's not, it's not a preemptive measure. It's not like you, the residents approve this, then it automatically means Hawthorne's going to be approving now. So that, correct. What Russell, the city attorney, mentioned, which is a very key point of all of this, is with the illegal market already still delivering because they allowed to, or especially even the legitimate side, they're allowed to deliver, with this five percent, at least it would help us cover the cost of whatever PD is already using in order to address that issue. And so it's only combating what is already being forced upon us from that industry and it's helping PD address the issue. You're right, you're right, approving it would not just destroy the illegal department, I mean, the illegal market, but helping supply our police department in order to combat it and a way for us to track it, it just makes it easier. But we don't want to confuse residents, this is no way saying if you vote yes on this, it means it's going to be legalized retail and distribution Hawthorne. It's just a way to help our staff compete and regulate.
Exactly, so, no, but like-
That's not what we vote. We're voting test to put something on the ballot for the tax with five percent, that's it.
But council member Hader, Wah did make a good point, is, and it's, I mean, just we're looking at what you just said, is that this is going to stem, the, this, the five percent would help our police and staff be able to enforce against those illegal shops, the legal people, those people who are illegally selling into our city. But this would only be enacted if we open up retail establishments, which we would tax. Oh, I mean, that sure sounds like a preemptive thing to me. I mean, we have to be very careful on this.
We can, we can tax the legal ones that are delivering into Hawthorne that are being forced to deliver into us.
I don't think we can.
No, we can't. That's what, that's what, that's the thing. This will only take place, and with the benefit of this five percent tax would be if-
If we-
Well, I'm not gonna, I'm not really for that, but-
If we approved to open up marijuana distrib-, cannabis, yeah.
This happened in the future. At some point.
Well, I know what you're talking about is can we tax the deliveries?
Does it address this?
The state do that, not the cities.
No, we cannot. We cannot tax, it is happening already. Delivery is happening already. We cannot.
But we don't get a pass through, we don't get anything from that.
No, but the issue is that we are in the crossroad, it's already legalized, we are in the crossroad of transportation of marijuana, both legal and illegal. We are fighting illegal activities. And if council in the future decides to put one here in the city to hopefully, you know, control and provide legal, legal marijuana for consumers rather than going to underground market, then that generates some revenue to offset the cost of fighting illegal activities.
So, Mr. City Manager, then why not wait till a future city council decides to legalize marijuana and have them institute this?
You are not legalizing marijuana, it's already legalized.
No, no, beating, legalizing the retail shops here in the city.
You are not doing that.
We're not doing that. Why, this, this does nothing-
Because by then-
By putting this into place, nothing happens until we open up retail shops in the city.
Yes, the, the difference is that some cities jumped into it three years ago and they established 10% and 20% tax. If you want to wait until future, then we won't be able even to establish 2% tax.
Why not?
Because of competition.
It goes back to what the state put on us.
I mean, I mean, how many people here on this council are excited about opening up these retail shops in Hawthorne? I mean, I'm not.
They're already here.
Well, then let's enforce them.
But we're strapped on, so what they're trying, it's earmarking that whatever happens in the future with Hawthorne, whether we're all here or not, it, it earmarks the piece of the pie for Hawthorne so that the state or future cannot dictate the, the tax measure we can imply. Because before we could apply 10-
Exactly.
Because we lost on that, now we're pushed to five, but it's worrisome. All we're doing is, here's the tax, we don't lose in the future, but we're not approving it. We just don't want the state to take more of that five percent.
You know, I'm not thrilled about opening up a cannabis in town either, but, you know, when, when you cannot even stop the guy from selling a burrito on Hawthorne Boulevard, you know, eventually the, the lobbying is going to happen where they're going to, you know, just make it, where you're going to have to do it whether you like it or not. And, but I, I, I get it that, you know, you're putting it on the ballot, you're going to be taxing the future X amount if, in fact, you know, we end up opening up or allowing one.
It's carving out our part of the pie before the state takes all of it.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So this is what we're trying to do, we're trying to protect the city for the future because we know this, and you know, by going to the South Bay Cox, all those bills that has even been putting up there in Sacramento, that they were trying even to say that they were going to try to force the cities to open marijuana shops as the same number as the liquor stores.
Right, that bill didn't pass last year, fortunately.
But it's coming back again.
It is coming back again.
It's coming back at the same capital.
Don't keep coming back until they get it.
So they keep coming until they got the vote to dictate what we can do and what we cannot do. Like the proposition fifth, the prop, the 50 is coming back again about the housing, that the state want to mandate us to build more, more housing. It's, it's, it's already starting debate in Sacramento. So everything is coming back to bite us in the, you know what?
Listen, if you have a, if you have a shop on Inglewood Avenue and 133rd, it's in Hawthorne.
Exactly.
I mean, you know, it's in Hawthorne. That's a sad part about that.
And let me tell you the sad part is that the sheriff came and shut down that thing-
It reopened.
For two days and then the next, the following three days, it was open.
But see, that can't happen.
But, but it, but it's happening, it's happening because-
And the reason, you know about it because that's the visible one. There are many invisible ones.
Of course, underground.
You know, Mr. Mayor, this is only a safeguard.
No, that's fine, that's fine.
No, this is only a safeguard for city budget. You are not legalizing it in Hawthorne.
Of course, I understand that.
It's only for future.
And any retail operations that are here in the city have already been shut down by our police department, so I don't think you're giving them enough credit.
No, that's not part of, it's not our police department, they don't have, they don't have church district on that side.
But you're saying they're, they're here. Retail establishments here in the city of Hawthorne are nonexistent because our police department finds them and they close them. So that's almost taking away credit from them.
No, we know, we know, for example, they, they shut down two things these past two weeks because we got those emails. So they doing their job, but, but they not even getting paid to do that job because we don't get no money to pay for, to give them no raise.
As part of general policing, though.
We don't have no money to give them raise.
If we're looking at PD to combat it how we want it, we do need to provide them with the necessary resources, which this five percent would cover, safeguard the future five percent for PD to combat it, if we ever get that far. We're still counting the chickens before even hatch, we're still in like phase one of the, of the egg.
And I'm still hoping that the voters won't vote for it.
Chief, you really want to answer this question?
Leave chief out of it.
Are you getting funded to law, to enforce the law here in the city, including the marijuana shops right now? Are these people doing it for free?
Yes.
Or is it part of their duties?
I'm sorry, can you repeat the question? There's a lot, there's a lot going on up here, I didn't-
Are we utilizing?
No, no, that's not the question. The question is, are, are police officers out working for free or are they getting paid for enforcing the laws, including closing down these marijuana shops that sprout up?
As they, as illegal ones come up, you know, that's part of our job.
So, yes, they are.
So, yes, we are, we are doing that, yes.
Okay, so we have funding, so-
But it's extra work.
But this is not, this is kind of misleading. Because, no, you know, Mr. Mayor, because we are facing, because of a state law change and legalized marijuana, we are facing a lot of more activities than we used to face when it wasn't like this. So therefore, illegal activity has been increased. As you know, people are farming in their backyard and sometimes they are even doing, yes? And sometimes they do more than six plants.
Yes.
And we have to discover those. So, you know, so this is extra-
I'm going to call for the vote and I'm going to join my colleagues in giving this opportunity for the voters to decide.
Right.
So I made the motion.
Second.
Please vote.
Yeah, I made a motion.
The vote reflects mayor and city council voting yes.
All right, so what's the next item here? Okay, let's move on to the 13.
Number 12.
Was it 12?
Yeah, number 12.
Okay, number 12, please.
Orders number 2195, second reading, and orders of the city council of the city of Hawthorne, California, enacting municipal code section 2.41 regarding reserve police officer program for adoption.
The move.
Second.
Please vote.
The vote reflects mayor and city council voting yes.
Number 13?
City manager.
There are four items on the city manager consent calendar. The city manager would like to say a few words about items number 14, 16 and 17.
I bet you're running, you're running on you.
Mayor, city council, I have two, two of the items, I want to talk about it on, on my consent calendar. Your, your excellent public works engineering division while working on Prairie and El Segundo project, and in fact, you have another item finaling, you know, Prairie Avenue Phase One, which included 11 traffic signals and replacement and upgrade plus ADA ramp. But at the same time that we are finalizing that project, they have been working on developing two other projects and one of them is local street project, local street improvement project that consists of 14 streets throughout the city in different neighborhoods. It's chosen based on pavement management system and, and based on streets with lower rates as far as, you know, the rating, the rating process that is involved with these evaluations, which has to do with different modes of failures. These are the 14 streets, they are in Ramona Track, Holly Park, Holly Glen and, and also Bajer Park areas. This is, the work consists of reconstruction of pavement structure section and also at the same time, new striping and markings. It includes concrete escape improvement involving sidewalk driveways and ADA ramp upgrades and also adjustment of utilities to grade. These are the different types of failures. For example, this one is alligator cracking due to excessive compressive force by traffic load over pavement, pavement layers. This one below it is like block ran that due to temperature differences that cause shrinkage and expansion of asphalt layers. On this one, you see trench failures, for example, on Lemoli Avenue. It involves, it's showing pictures of, you know, broken curb and gutters that are going to be replaced in this project and also upgrade of ADA ramps. Unfortunately, these standards keeps changing and ADA ramps that were built like 10 years ago no longer comply with new standards and we have to reconstruct them, which basically smother this slope and it posed some challenges to design and construction of these that they're all included in this project. It's 2.7 million dollar project, includes SP1, Measure R and Measure M. So with your approval, then we start advertising for the project beginning on this, on this Thursday. The other project is street catch basin improvement. So let me tell you what this is. This one, this is showing the city of Hawthorne storm drain system under the street, the pipelines. The dot marks you see consist of either two or four catch basin inlets and we have about 1,020 something of these catch basin inlets throughout the city that we are responsible to maintain in addition to storm drain pipes. In the phase one of this project that was completed two years ago, we completed more than 400 of catch basin inlets and I tell you what we did. So this is showing basically a picture of a catch basin inlet. You have seen, you all have seen these curb openings and this one in particular is showing a biofiltration catch basin. It's showing a tree is planted in a box and then you see the roots inside the box under the street, which acts as a biofilter to filter out pollutants in, in the water. The effectiveness of this biofiltration is great because it can prevent many toxic pollutants, normally metal pollutants like chromium, aluminum, copper and also animal feces. And then filtered water is captured through perforated pipe that goes into the storm drain This project is going to build connector pipe screens you see here on this picture. We call them also trash capture device, devices that are going to be installed at the pipe opening to the catch basin box, which prevents trash getting into the storm drain system and ultimately Dominguez Channel and oceans. This is showing a catch basin that hasn't been cleaned up and does not have a trash capture devices. This is how much trash can get into these, to these inlets and end up at the ocean. The other aspect of it that we were, we love to do and we are going to do is installing these fabric also filters. These fabric filters can absorb oil, as you see in this picture, and other type of pollutants. It will be installed in the opening of the catch basin, but inside, and of course, these are extremely, you know, labor intense, maintenance intense, but we have established in our public works maintenance division, a group of four storm drain worker, MPDS worker, which they maintain these more than 1,000 catch basin inlets throughout the year. So this, with, with completion of this project, I would say Hawthorne will be 99,000% free of any discharge of trash into ocean. So we can completely, you know, have our runoff discharge trash free to Dominguez Channel, which is quite an achievement and hopefully we can actually prevent also other pollutants getting, getting into the ocean. While some other cities and jurisdictions were trying to fight Clean Water Act and impose MPDS requirement, we, we have been quietly doing whatever we could in our city despite scarce funding and I am proud of the work they have been doing here in public works and congratulations to city council of what they are going to approve tonight. It's a, it's a great step forward in, in compliance with the Clean Water Act.
I move on to the-
Yeah, let me add this. Yeah, discussion. So, Arnie, so, so that 2.7 million dollar has been approved by Major M and R, right? SP one, uh-huh, okay. Okay, so, but that's a good plan. I like it, thank you. And the drain is fantastic because I did attend the sanitation meeting, and they were talking about all these stormwater drains, and the city had to be in compliance. So, I'm glad to hear that you said that we'll have ninety-nine percent in compliance. So, that's fantastic, thank you.
Yes, through the chair?
Yes.
I do want to thank Arnie Shadbeer for.
No, no, please don't thank me.
And I want to thank, I want to thank the Public Works Department.
Yes, thank you.
I want to thank the, for this, for this measure, for actually taking the lead in doing this. I am so proud that this city with its very limited resources has done so much more than so many other cities. When I go to these conferences, I realize our city is way ahead of many other cities in terms of compliance with required, not only compliance, but also I realize that our city is very passionate about, about the environment and keeping the environment pristine. So, I want to thank you for that. Thank you in the Public Works Department.
Thank you so much. Councilor Awat?
Quick, quick topic, touch on the biofilters. I remember we had a good discussion on that at the hotel when I asked about what is it that those trees, that's differently with this, so with the metal framing around it, what set that differently between the other trees planted? Once I found out it was a biofilter and that we're like the, we're pushing as one of the first cities to really be implementing this Clear Act, I mean, the Clean Water Act. Discussions came up with Suzanne, who's part of the Sierra Club, mentioning that there are available funding for trees to be planted toward, is it any kind of tree, or is it, is a certain particular kind of?
No, these are, yes, a certain kind of trees. There are many of, by the way, it's not unique. But these are certain type of trees that they have the type of roots that can grow in the box and acts as a filter.
Now, are there other sites that could still utilize that kind of biofilter?
You mean like for the purpose of filtering the water? Yes, yes, definitely.
So, if we were able to work with Sierra Club in order to get more of the trees donated for free, it's not a specific type of tree, it can just be any kind?
There are, there are a specific type of trees, but there are many, many of them. It's not unique, but not any tree, for example, palm tree wouldn't work.
But they, yeah, they would, they would kind of know that segment of it.
Yeah, but yes, but then it should go hand in hand. It's not only the tree, it should go hand in hand with some other funding for building. Because each catch basin, reinforced concrete box catch basin inlet costs about fifteen thousand dollars itself.
Correct.
The tree is a cheaper part of.
Right, it's the easy part.
So, yeah, so the challenge is to get more funding to do also more reconstruction project on these. And then tree also is an element of it.
Perfect.
Another element of it. So, with that, Mr. Mayor, I have items fifteen through seventeen for your approval.
I move.
Second.
Please vote.
The vote reflects mayor and city council voting yes.
Mr. City Attorney?
I made a mistake. You have also item fourteen to vote on?
I think we voted on that, didn't we?
No, we didn't. By mistake, I mentioned item fifteen through seventeen. It's actually fourteen also.
Item number fourteen, I make a motion.
Second.
Please vote.
The vote reflects mayor and city council voting yes.
Mr. City Attorney?
I just want to item on my consent calendar.
I move.
Second.
Please vote.
The vote reflects mayor and city council voting yes.
We still have a closed session, sir?
Yes.
All right.
Yeah, I wanted to, to ask, just went real fast regarding the setting up of the, the police department. No, where's the?
Oh, the Reserve Academy or the?
Yeah, yeah, the Reserve Police. I like to learn a little bit more about that program.
Chief, could you come up and, I guess, touch base on the Reserve Officer Program that we just voted in?
Who's eligible for that and, you know, things like that.
Sir, I think what I'd like to do is maybe prepare a short report, you know, give you an overview of our program and do that. But in essence, we have reserve officers that come and volunteer and help out. So, we have different levels, level two, level one. And this is simply helping us identify the level one reserves a little more in detail. But I'll prepare something for you.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. We have a closed session, so if everybody can just say a couple words for their elected officials' reports. Mr. City Clerk, Mr. City Treasurer, David Patterson?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Great meeting. Want to thank the community for coming out, participating in the process and letting your voice to be heard always. Regarding the Officer Reserve Program, very interested in that. Love to see if I'm too old to be considered for that. But I'd love to get some information about that as well. Regarding cannabis, I just want to throw my little two cents in. I hope that the council, our future council, may consider some alternate cannabis uses. I know, you know, that we had a conversation about retail, but it'd be great if the city can consider like research uses in the city, testing uses in the city. Those don't, you know, bring the same type of experience. But in terms of retail, I do support marijuana. As most of the people in the city of Hawthorne, I think it's odd that people are, will easily, will quickly take opiates like oxycodone, oxy, whatever your doctor prescribes, but look down upon marijuana. I think it's the weirdest thing in the world. And I do have a question, I don't know if right now is the right time to ask about that. If we allow the sale of CBD products in the city of Hawthorne, if not, that may be something that we could consider. Outside of that, I want to thank our, our law enforcement and our fire. I had a fire in my apartment about a week and a half ago. And it was quite traumatic for my uncle, who I live with. And he didn't know that I wasn't in the apartment. And so, he was the one that discovered the fire and called nine-one-one. And so, I want to thank the Hawthorne Police Department for their response. I understand they were there very quickly. The sheriffs were there very quickly, understanding that. Few of the sheriffs even went back into the apartment while there was a fire going on to confirm I wasn't there. You know, my uncle was just very appreciative to the response. And of course, LA County Fire, who we contract with, they did just a great job handling the scenario. They were there very quickly, extinguished the fire, salvaged, like, and did so without, and saving some items that were also in the apartment while they were putting out the fire. So, like, saved my laptop, stuff like I wouldn't have expected them to even consider doing. But they made it a point of making sure they, you know, that not everything was ruined by the fire or by the water they used to extinguish it. And so, I have just utmost amount of respect for all these men and women and appreciate, want to appreciate them publicly. And I also want to, you know, thank the, those that are, you know, here on the council who reached out to me over the course of last week, and our city manager as well, you know, extending their concern. It's been quite a busy last couple of weeks in kind of dealing with all that, but I definitely appreciate your concern. And I definitely appreciate our, our police department and our fire department, as well as the sheriffs. And that's it, thank you.
Mr. City Clerk?
Yes, I have a few things. So, first of all, thank you to everyone who's here tonight and those watching at home. I just have a few updates. So, one, the first thing is I want to share my gratitude to those who participated in the MLK Community Cleanup. Also, want to thank our elected officials who participated. So, Olivia, Alex, and Mike, and to Montero as well for helping us get the gloves and the garbage back. So, much appreciated. It was really nice to see our community come together and make a difference. In about an hour and a half, we cleaned up the area around Hawthorne Middle School and Washington Avenue. So, you could really tell a difference based on the before and after pictures that we took. So, we hope to hold similar events in the future. Yeah, and again, you know, we're telling you about, part of me telling you about it today is because when they do come up, we really do want more people to show up. Because it really is, it's great to walk your neighborhood with your neighbors. And, you know, you could really make a difference in the community. Last week, I participated in the homeless count. I had the opportunity to walk the city with one of our neighbors, Lisa, who I met that evening. We were escorted to certain areas by our HPD. Based on my conversations with our officers, I was impressed by their understanding of our homeless population in Hawthorne. Volunteering in the event was a good learning experience and reinforced the importance of resources for homeless population. Thank you to Vaughn and Kewana and their team for hosting the event. So, thank you. If you still haven't attended an information session about the new learning, the new voting process, the Ramona Neighborhood Association is holding a voting presentation on Thursday, February thirteenth at seven PM to eight-thirty PM. And it's going to take place at Ramona Elementary School. And last, it's regarding what happened on Sunday. So, the death of Kobe Bryant and his daughter and the others who perished on Sunday has impacted many people at different levels. As a counselor, I want to make sure that everyone knows that experiencing grief in these situations is real. So, if you feel that you need to talk to someone, please look into making an appointment with a mental health therapist. If you don't have access to a therapist through your insurance, you can dial two-one-one on your phone, and a representative from the county will help you find a free mental health counselor based on your income situation. And that is all, thank you.
Thank you so much. I'm going to go to Councilmember Mike Daye.
Well, first, I want to congratulate the police department. You know, it's always nice when things are getting better, you know? You listen, watch TV, and you hear, you see horror stories. And it's nice to see our crime going down, less burglaries, less violent crime. I mentioned to, earlier, that I had a very good friend for years that was a sergeant in the Hawthorne Police Department. I'd go out with him, and those were different days. Those were different days thirty-five, thirty years ago. And today, you know, everything looks, looks good, looks better. And I hope it continues. To piggyback on what Paul said, we went out, Olivia and I and Alex were out there walking the streets and picking up trash, you know? Like, usually it's a bunch of DUI cases out there, you know? But that was a very nice afternoon, and it was a really good experience because you go through something like that, and it does, you know, you feel something. You feel like you're cleaning up your city. And even though it was, it was, we went around the block, you know, I started thinking about, boy, why, you know, if a group of kids would do this here and there, or not necessarily the kids, but just the citizens would go out and do that, they'd get something out of it, you know? The city would be better for it, and people would learn. And then you see certain things, like, for example, there's a little, that little street on one-twenty-ninth where people bring in their children and drop them off right there. Well, the sidewalk, the, what would ordinarily be the grass, it's not. It's a, it's a bush that's about a foot and a half tall. And so, people park in that little, and the things that you would find in there shouldn't be found anywhere near a school. As a matter of fact, there was a time when, you know, you're thinking, I'm not going to stick my hand in there. What if I catch a needle or something, you know? And so, by doing that, you get to, you get to see, you get to know. And I just thought it was a great idea, you know? I mean, I'm not a trash picker by any, you know, but I enjoyed it. And I thought it was educational. And I think that we should promote that. We should promote, we should figure out a way to promote that a little bit and just, just for therapy if nothing else, you know? So, that was a good day. And then the other thing too, I was driving down, just driving around, and I happened to turn down, I think it was Doty, right off of Rose Grants. And man, there was about four or five buildings that had a ton of stuff out in front of it, you know? I don't know how long it's been there. I don't know how long they allow that to be there. But I had a friend of mine, I got a call from code enforcement one time, and they were, you know, look, I'll give you till tomorrow morning to get that out of there, blah, 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 you know? And so, I think that, I don't know. I think we should look into that a little bit and put a little pressure on people to pick up their trash or don't leave their trash out. That's a problem. And it's a problem if nobody sees it, you know? You're driving around, you see a couch, and then, you know, the next building over, you see a dresser, and you know, I don't know how long they've been there, but it looked terrible. So, I would suggest that whoever's job that is to go by and drive by those things and then, you know, put a little pressure on somebody to make that go away or come up with a way to deal with that, with a viable program that's consistent, because it needs to be consistent. You can't pick on one guy and then you leave the other one alone. You got to punish everybody equally, otherwise it's not going to work.
We have a program, Mike.
Well, you know, it's, I'm just bringing up, I'm just telling you, I drove down the street, and I saw half a furniture factory out on the street. Okay, that's, that's all I'm here to report. It was on Doty, I think. All right, that's it for me.
Thank you, sir. Councilmember Awat?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I want to thank everyone for coming out, want to, you know, congratulate the police department. One thing I wanted to touch on real quick, if Vaughn, if you can kind of come up and touch base on the homeless count initiative that was run through Hawthorne, what was very interesting was the mix between Hawthorne resident volunteers and the amount that were outside of the city that came to volunteer. And then the amount of homeless, rough estimate of how much we kind of tallied.
Of individuals that volunteered, or?
Both, the individuals that volunteered, the mix, and then what the outcome was for the.
Good evening. The homeless count was scheduled last week, or we had it conducted last week. It was a great event. We had over fifty-five volunteers there. We polled the volunteers what locations of Hawthorne, the residents were in. And half the population there were from local cities. And one thing I did mention was thank you for the support on behalf of the council. All the volunteers went out. We had twenty-seven grid areas which are broken down by streets. And at the end of the night, unofficial count was under a hundred individuals experienced homelessness. So, it was a great event. Thank you for volunteering. Thank you for Hawthorne Police Department helping. The official stats should come out within a few weeks. Got a state actual numbers that were counted, but I can say as of today, it was under a hundred individuals.
Under what?
Under a hundred individuals.
And then the census would allow us to at least ask for additional funding grant?
Yes, as opportunities come up through the county, our numbers will be based on what category and what type of funding that we can achieve.
Just kind of piggyback on the importance of your census coming up too. What else was it? Yeah, actually, I wanted to applaud you on creating that kind of push and actually having that set up here in Hawthorne. This is supposed to be a, what's it called, a term of, not endearment, endearment, it's a, what's that word called? When you're giving some, oh, compliment. My favorite show back in the day used to be Parks and Rec. So, you exemplify Leslie Knope in the highest degree. I'm kind of jealous. But no, you've really turned that Parks and Rec department into something that, you have everyone coming out, enjoying the parks and all these activities. And the work you've done with Michaels, I wanted to give you some credit on that. The amount of time you've taken to really help that school facilitate this fencing program at the Memorial Center and their competition coming up in February. I mean, hands, hats off to you for really taking the time to really work with them, create a program of fencing and a competition for these special need kids at the center. So, again, just wanted to applaud you and give you the gratitude and recognition that you deserve.
Thank you.
Last couple of comments. You know, the event was really nice to have more of the public come out. You do tend to see how much the city does do in helping this homeless issue here in Hawthorne, especially on PD. I even learned for the first time that the amount of, we try and help provide them a job, a place to live, food, the whole nine yards. I mean, they're going and offering that to every person they see on their own time. They'll devote their own time to go there and dress it, and because you have the metro unit for that, is only two units for six square miles. So, the fact that you, Chief Ishi, and your police department is well-oiled in this manner, hats off to you as well. And then the last part was, we did, we all kind of lost somebody with the passing of Kobe Bryant over this weekend. It really shocked everyone. It really shocked everyone, whether you watched basketball or not. Kobe's influence on the field and off the field touched everyone. I guarantee you for the next week or two weeks, you're going to have people then complaining about not wanting to go on social media because it's so depressing, just the fact of everything you're reading about Kobe and the legacy he brought behind. He spent so much time on self-growth and family, even as a star athlete, he never drove away from that foundation. So in light of hearing the incident Monday morning, a few of us started calling out to see if there was any funding to kind of get a memorial or something painted out within the Hawthorne area, maybe at one of the parks, or to possibly redesign one of the old basketball courts, kind of like what we did for the footsaw. I remember Hawthorne PD was working at one point with the Lakers Foundation in order to help re-facilitate one of those facilities. By this response, I got, there are, there are companies in Hawthorne now that are willing to upfront the money just to help us kind of get this memorial slash redevelop the basketball court here in Hawthorne. Tentatively, there's committed 7,500 that they're willing to push in and there's companies that said that they would match dollar for dollar what we would raise within the first 24 hours. I thought it would be something kind of cool to take one of the basketball courts we have here in Hawthorne, create a mural that can be drawn or painted on the court side itself so as they're playing, they're also on the mural itself. So it's kind of setting a, a, a little hash, not hashtag, but earmark of not only representing who Kobe was on the court and how he changed basketball history, but how he really changed history itself and what it means to be an NBA player on and off the field. I mean, what a great leader. Wanted to just pray for his family, everyone that's suffering from the ordeal. But if, if that's something that we could work with Vaughn and maybe look at redeveloping a site at no cost to the city, kind of like we did the footsaw field, I mean, that, that's, that would be cool. Yeah, that's all I wanted to say. And thank you all for coming out.
Thank you. Councilmember Olivia Valentine?
Thank you. On January 16th, the KHHR Airport Communities Network Committee held its first meeting of the year. So here are some of the highlights of that meeting. Wiseburn residents expressed the view that over the past few years, the type and frequency of aircraft that operate in and out of Hawthorne Airport has changed, has become louder and more frequent. Another resident wanted to know how to address a discernible change in the volume of air traffic. Wiseburn wanted to know whether they could be considered for noise contour studies. There was considerable interest expressed in the increased volume of air traffic with an, and an expectation with the, that with the coming of SoFi Stadium in Inglewood, the volume will, will become even greater. William Freeman, the Community Engagement Officer of the FAA, gave a presentation on noise roundtables. He indicated that we are not the only roundtable in the area, that there are several others in the Western Pacific region, including the LAX Noise Roundtable and San Francisco and Oakland Roundtables. He indicated the purpose of noise, that, that there have been, there has been an increase in noise roundtables over the years and that the purpose is to inform the members of any changes in the airspace system and give them the technical assistance they need to answer any questions. He also expressed the willingness of the FAA to help us if we want to set up a technical working committee to work on any specific project such as changing the, changing flight procedures in the area because some people have said that because of the change in the type and frequency of aircraft, their neighborhoods are impacted in ways they hadn't been impacted before. So we can work with the FAA to set up a project to change flight procedures in the future. As a follow-up, I have the email address provided by the FAA to report noise complaints, And I would request that if it's not already on the website, that we put that on our website. Last week, I attended and chaired the League's Revenue and Taxation Policy Committee in Sacramento. Hundreds of cities attended and several policy committees met to develop a 2020 work plan for the league. I will have a report at the next council meeting and I will also have a report on the water inspection tour I went on over the weekend to Hoover Dam and the Colorado River with our water wholesale agency, West Basin Municipal Water District. I want to also thank the city clerk, Paul Jimenez, for that community cleanup. I too enjoyed the experience because we were with our neighbors and we were doing something positive for the community. And I think it's something we should keep and keep up and I, and I do recommend that we do it quarterly. It was really a great experience. And the last thing I want to say is that tomorrow is our Hawthorne Business Expo and I am so pleased that we have 42 Hawthorne businesses that will be participating tomorrow. We have never had that number of Hawthorne businesses before. So I'm just really pleased about that. We have several different, different, different activities. There is a, there are breaking, the breakout sessions especially I'm proud of, as well as all of the other things. Our breakout sessions are on financing your business, supercharging your social media, building a strong website, cybersecurity, and also the, the South Bay Workforce Investment Board will have a workshop on how you can have resources for your business at no cost. So, thank you everyone, have a good week.
Thank you, ma'am. Mayor Protem?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Again, you know, thank you for everybody to come, thank you for the birthday wishes. Thank you, Chief and the Police Department, outstanding work. And I like again to see those statistics going down, so that's, that's fantastic. And that's what the city needs to hear because like I say, city is safe, our park is beautiful and safe, our schools are good and clean, we have prosperity, right? So that is why we need to look into our city to grow and continue to grow. I'm glad to see that, you know, we're giving a lot of attention to the homeless issues because in the past, you know, it was a fear about talking about homeless and if we have homeless in the city of Hawthorne. So it's glad to see that because, you know, Vaughn has not just been a leader here in Hawthorne, but also the, the South Bay COG that is represented by the 16 cities, that we have also the other homeless task force that working together to bring programs to help the homeless. You know, like the last meeting that I attended last week, you know, the, the COG is going to give about $700,000 to different cities to, to bring more programs to homeless. And one of the agencies that was funding is going to be PAT, you know, because PAT is the one who tried to prevent people to become homeless and give them vouchers for, for hotel, motels and to stay instead of the streets. So, and, and the homeless count, it was all over LA County, so we will find out soon all the numbers. And the last time that the count was done in Hawthorne, we only had 94 homeless. So we hope that number continued to go down. So, so I hope that we will continue to provide service to the unfortunate people that live on the street because, you know, sometimes it's not just the mental, mental issue, but sometime it's financial issue. So, so families and, and teenagers are homeless living in their cars, so we need to help them I want to say, you know, this has been a great year, you know, because we started, I started here on 2019, now we've been going to 2020. So it was a very productive year of 2019 and now we begin a new decade. And 2020, you know, we're going to do great things here together and then started with the direction from our interest in managing the public works. We see all the, the improvement that's going to be done on the streets. So we continue to see all the work, you know, from Prairie to, to Al Segundo. So, you know, our boulevard is looking beautiful and that's what we want to see, you know, people working and our tax dollar has been putting on the right place, right, Arnie? So we, we are proud that, you know, people vote for these measures like measure R, measure M, that bring these dollars because this money is not coming from our general fund, but it's coming from grants that we have applied to the county to gather our share of the money so we can, you know, maintain our roads and this drain system. So thank you for all the work you guys are, we're doing out there, all the departments working together to make the city beautiful. One thing about the trash, Mike, is that every day my heart aches to see those bulk items on the sidewalk, couches, you know, mattress. And there is no reason for that because if you recall, in, a year ago in January, we, we voted to give people 20 free item pickup a year. So there is no reason for them to put those bulk items on the street. They just make one phone call to the Republic Service and they will pick up those bulk items during the cleaning day. If your cleaning day is on Tuesday on the, on that side of your sidewalk, that's the night before is when you put those items out, but call and tell them you're going to put a couch or a mattress or a desk on the, on the sidewalk and they will pick it up. So people are not doing this. And I think, you know, we need to do a major public campaign about, please help us clean up Hawthorne because there is way, we gave you 20 item free pickup a year because before you only had three pickups a year. Now you've got 20 item free pickups a year, so there's no reason to put those, those, those bulk items on the street. And even what I'm going to do out of my one pocket, I'm going to send that letter out again, the one that explained to the landlords, to the, you know, homeowners association, all of them, I'm going to send the letters to all of them to tell them, please tell your tenants, when they're moving out, coordinate with your property manager to call Republic Service to pick up. Because what they do is most of the apartment buildings, as when somebody's moving out, they leave half of their furnitures on the sidewalk. And because the property manager doesn't call because they think they have to pay for them to pick up those, those bulk items. So we need to do more education about this cleanup, this city, because I'm telling you, that's one thing that my heart, oh my God, every time I drive by, I see this bulk item. So I'm with you. Mr. Mayor, thank you very much.
All right. Thank you, sir. Thanks, everybody. So looking forward to attending the Hawthorne Business Expo, which is Councilmember Olivia Valentine's brainchild about four or five years ago. How long has it been? Five years ago, right? Fifth, yeah, the fifth year. Was glad to be there, kind of helped you out the first time, get it kickstarted. And now it's taken a life of its own. So it's a brainchild, she's calling and getting these businesses to come to sponsor the event, to participate. And she also has a healthy amount of volunteers that we also want to credit, where they're running around, trying to orient all the attendees as to where the booths are, getting all the speakers lined up. So she has a great, a good amount of people helping her out. So we want to congratulate and thank them for that effort. So I'm looking forward to being there with you tomorrow. You too, right? Everybody can try to show up, right? Good. So what else? Again, I'm really excited and proud of our police department for all the great work that they're doing. The decreasing crime statistics in the city are awesome. It's a good testament that we're going on the right track as a city and because of the support of our city council for our police department. We love what they're doing and we want to continue and give them what they need to be able to do their job and the liberty to be able to come up with their own policies on what they feel is best. And so we continue to support your chief and your, and your men and women. So before we go in the back, I also want to echo on some of my council members with regards to Kobe Bryant. I mean, I was Laker fan since, you know, started watching them when Kareem was around, James Worthy, Cooper, all those, that, that, way back then. Yeah, no, I'm 48, so whatever. But, you know, those were the times and as times came along, then Kobe became Divac and Shaquille O'Neal and that generation, which won championships also. So it's, you know, it's really sad for me and for a lot of people. I like to play basketball and you can see me on the court on Saturdays at some of the basketball courts that are out there and which have been refurbished, it's a great job, Vaughn. But when we're out there, we're thinking about like our heroes and who inspires us and Kobe Bryant definitely has been one of them. One of the things that you, that you guys might not know and hasn't been publicized, I don't know why, but the day that Kobe Bryant passed away, one of the things he did with his daughter, he went to mass at seven o'clock in the morning. He went to church, he went to mass, the Catholic mass, at seven o'clock in the morning. So he went in, what he usually used to do with his family is go in the back so that he wouldn't disrupt the, everybody else because, oh, you know, the celebrity, you know, awe and everything. He wanted just to make sure that he was slipped in and slipped out and he would, he went to communion with his daughter. People saw that he went to communion to receive the Eucharist with his daughter. So just imagine that, that before he boarded the helicopter at the helipad and took off, you know, he had received Christ in his heart through the form of the Eucharist. And one of the last, one of the last things he did was go to church. I mean, just so you, he was in tune with, with his faith. When he went through the situation where he was accused of certain things, one of the people that helped him out through that situation was a Catholic priest at that home parish in Newport Beach. So I feel confident that the Lord has received him, his daughter and all those people up in heaven easily, easily without question because of what he not only did for his family, but he did for us, to inspire us in everything that he did from dedication to his sport and dedication to his family, dedication to the community and giving back to the community. So before we go into the back, I'd like to have a moment of silence because I know we're going to have a closed session and by the time we come out, you guys aren't going to be here. So let's have a moment of silence for him and all those who passed away with him. Okay, thank you, guys. Is there anyone who wishes to speak on the closed session? If not, I'll declare oral communications closed. I will now recess the city council meeting to conduct a closed session for a conference pursuant to the agenda. We are in recess. I asked the city council members to go to the back so we can get this done. I asked the city council members to go to the back so we can get this done. The city council is, meeting is called to order. We have met in closed session for a conference pursuant to the agenda. Mr. City Attorney?
Yes, and the city attorney has been instructed.
Do we need to vote on anything?
No.
Okay, so I instructed the city manager to please put the flag at half mast in honor of Kobe Bryant and all those who perished in the helicopter crash with him. Okay, thank you. This meeting is adjourned.